All right, thank you very much. The time is 6:00 PM. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Opening call to the public. Our call to the public is for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Is there anybody who wishes to speak during call to the public? We'll close call to the public. Item 6A is presentation for Penile County Strategic Transportation Safety Plan. At this time, I'll call up Chief Daniel Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's been going on for several months, probably longer. Penile County has been looking at accidents, why they happen, what can be done to make them stop, and there's some good people here tonight. Mike Blankenship's, he's going to come up and do a little presentation on how that came about and what they're doing to keep us a little safer on their streets. Come on up, Mike, and I'll let him introduce. He's got a couple of people with him. He never comes alone, so we'll let him introduce them.
Thanks, Chief. Kathy Borquez with Penile County Planning is here, and Jason Hefner with the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization that's leading this effort. In addition to the Sun Corridor MPO, Maricopa Association of Governments in the Phoenix area, and also Central Arizona Governments, CAG, are helping sponsor this study. There's several slides in your agenda. I won't hit on all of them, just to highlight a few of the key points here. But the study itself is going to analyze crash data over the last 10 years to determine what are the key emphasis areas that the region needs to focus on, what type of crashes, where are they happening, and then ultimately end up with some safety projects and identify safety funds and go after some of the federal safety funds that flow through ADOP. When we develop some of the safety strategies, we focus on what we call the four Es. So it's not just an engineering solution, but there are behavioral issues. As you see here statewide, we see that half of the people that die in crashes weren't wearing seat belts. So we'll develop some of these softer, non-engineering type of strategies to help address some of the more serious crashes. We throw a lot of numbers around in these safety studies, but it's really important to remember that we're talking about people, people's lives, families that are left behind. So over the last 10 years in Penile County, 539 fatal crashes, 627 people died in those crashes. So we're averaging almost 63 people a year in Penile County that never make it home to their loved ones because of a traffic crash. And those are the key crashes that we're going to focus on in this study, the fatal and the serious injury crashes. Just quickly, over the last few years, the crash numbers have been going up here in the county and really across the country. In Penile County, these are the top five types of crashes from a frequency standpoint: rear end, typically lower speed type of crashes, single vehicle, which are usually run off the road, and then angle and left turn are more intersection-related crashes. And again, we'll come up with strategies and projects to address those types of crashes. Of those 539 fatal crashes, the breakdown is a little differently. Almost half of those fatal crashes were single vehicle, somebody running off the road at a higher speed, not wearing a seatbelt, ejected from the vehicle. The second and third highest are very rare crashes, but when they occur, very fatal, very serious and tragic. Thirteen percent of the fatals were pedestrians getting struck and killed. Thirteen percent are head-on crashes, vehicles running into each other, going in opposite This just gives the breakdown of all those 36,000 crashes in the county by type. And again, we've highlighted in yellow the highest number of fatal crashes countywide, single-vehicle, head-on, and pedestrian. This gives the breakdown by agencies. We won't get into it, but I want to focus on in yellow in Florence, 875 crashes here within the town limits of Florence. So that would include all roads, including the state highways that run through the town. But 875 crashes over the 10-year period, 10 fatal crashes, and you can see here the breakdown is pretty much across the board with those fatal crashes. No one crash type standing out. So a couple of fatal rear-end crashes, a couple of angle fatal crashes, two head-on fatal crashes, a pedestrian fatal crash. And with this plan, we'll be developing top 10, top 20 lists for all of the incorporated areas within the county, including unincorporated Penile County, of what the local problems are from a location standpoint. So the red dots on this map here indicate those fatal crashes in and around the Florence area. Five of those 10 fatal crashes were on Hunt Highway. Two of the fatal crashes were on Arizona Farms Road, and then a couple here in town. And in the next slide, we kind of zoom in a little bit in the downtown area. You see there's a fatal crash on Main Street, a fatal crash on Adamsville, and then another fatal, a couple of fatals on the state routes, 79 and 279 through town. We do have a very easy-to-use online public involvement tool. Here's the website for it. You click on it, and it takes you right to a map where you can zoom in. If you want to just comment on locations in Florence, zoom right into Florence. Click on an icon for a pedestrian, a bike, or a motorist, and drop it on the intersection or the section of road that you're concerned about, and put your comment in there. You know, "Difficult to cross Butte Avenue because of the five lanes and high speeds and high volumes," whatever your comment might be. And so far, we've got just under 500 comments countywide on that website, and it'll be up for another month or so if you're interested in going on there and giving us your feedback so that we can incorporate that into the safety study. Our next steps are to dive deeper into the crash data, the 10 years of crash data, develop what are the key emphasis areas? Are they those single-vehicle crashes or pedestrian crashes? Are they the speeding crashes? And develop safety strategies, and ultimately develop some actual on-the-ground safety projects and go after -- this coming year, ADOP's going to have about $70 million of federal safety funds to distribute statewide. So we're going to develop some applications for the high-priority locations in the county. One that's already been awarded by ADOP, or at least deemed eligible, the money will be flowing into the county to do rumble strips on several roads around the county, one of them here in the area being Arizona Farms Road, that'll be getting some center line and edge line rumble strips to address those runoff road and head-on crashes. There's our contact information. If anybody wants to follow up with us, give us a call or shoot us an email. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know I ran through it pretty quickly, but if there's anything you have, we definitely want feedback, not just from the council members, but from really anybody that wants to give us feedback on what you think are main safety issues that should be addressed with this study.
Councilmembers, are there any questions regarding this presentation?
No, this is the second time I've heard it, so I want to thank Mike for being here tonight and presenting this.
I do have some feedback. I do have some feedback I had shared previously, and I know it hasn't been integrated yet into this step. But something that is of interest, especially in this area of Penile County, is taking a look at the occupations that are involved in these car accidents. I know that some concern has been expressed from those that work at the prisons and regarding, you know, some double shifts, mandatory overtime, how they're working, you know, so much, and then they're coming off shift, they're in a hurry to get home. You know, have we developed any reach-out, any education, any interventions that we can put into place to target that population? And I don't know if there's any other occupations that are trending in this data as well. I'd be interested to see.
Yep. And that's a good point, and we will look at that because that will fall under the distracted driving type, sleepy, fatigued. Yep, thank you.
You're very welcome. And then I was curious, I hadn't had a chance to ask, the safety strategies. Can you give a few examples of those?
Okay, so it'll be a long list for each of the emphasis areas. An engineering solution might be the rumble strips or putting in at a signalized intersection, only allowing left turns with the left turn arrow so that you don't have to deal with oncoming traffic when you make your left turn. An enforcement or education type of strategy might be recommending that town council develop an ordinance for no texting and driving, those types of things, more on the legislative enforcement law type of strategy.
Now, do you have that data lumped into your distracted driving as well, or is it just?
We do have that. And typically, it is very under-reported, the distracted driving. Because when the police officers, and Chief Hughes knows this, when the police officer is filling out the report, unless there is some evidence, the person that created the crash isn't typically going to offer up, "Oh, I was texting my wife when I rear-ended this vehicle," or, you know, "I was falling asleep when I ran off the road." But yes, that information is collected, and we do have that data.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
My understanding is that distracted driving is the number-one cause of accidents in the United States as a whole, the last reports I saw on it nationally. Now, I don't know about Arizona, but they say that distracted driving is the top accident cause in the United States now.
And it could be. It's just on the police crash report forms, the data that ends up in the state crash database is showing about, I want to say it's about 15% of the fatals list distracted driving as an issue. Now, other things that are listed are things like speed too fast for conditions, which is kind of a distracted, you know, you're just driving too fast for the stop-and-go traffic up ahead. So I would agree distracted driving is an issue, and I didn't hit on the number, but one of those early slides says that 95% of crashes involve some type of human behavior. You were doing something wrong or not doing something you should have done, whether it's speeding, not paying attention, you know, driving while drowsy or intoxicated, not wearing a seatbelt, those types of things.
Well, the point I was making, it wasn't the most fatalities caused, it's the most accidents, period. There's most accident, or the majority, or whatever, the vast majority are caused by distracted driving nationally. Now, like I said, I don't know about Penile County or Arizona, but that's what I've seen on the reports.
I would buy that. I mean, if we were all paying more attention when we were driving, a lot of these crash numbers would go down. Yep, I agree.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
Our next presentation this evening is Item B, Proclamation to Participate in the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee and Encourage Every Person to Be Counted. Mrs. Jennifer Evans, and I believe Mr. Benjamin Bitter is going to be presenting on her behalf today.
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer is ill today, so handed over some of her duties to me to fill in. So Jennifer is our town liaison for the Complete Count Committee and Census 2020 as a whole. The Census is a very important project for the town of Florence specifically, as well as cities and towns across the country. It is important that we get each and every resident of our community counted because about $2,000 per year per person is what we get back to the community for our count. So if you think of, if we ended up 1,000 people short on the count, that'd be about $2 million that would not be coming to our community. And so it's our goal to get as many people counted as possible. To that end, we will be forming a Complete Count Committee, which has the goal of reaching hard-to-reach segments of our population. If you went back and looked at a map of the Census 2010, you'll see that there are certain blocks within the census data where we are getting far below a 50% response rate, what the Census likes to see is about a 75% or higher. And so our goal with this Complete Count Committee will be to reach as many people in as many ways and as effectively as possible so that we can ensure that our town is being counted correctly and completely.
All right. Council, are there any questions regarding this item?
I've had people ask me about how do you apply to be a census taker?
Yeah, we've, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson, we've got a census page ready to go on the website. We're going to launch it on Thursday as the first meeting of the Complete Count Committee, so in conjunction with that, we'll be launching a section of the Town of Florence website that will also have the links to census jobs on there specifically, as well as information generally about the census. So we'll have those on the website come Thursday.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hawkins, did you have anything? Okay. All right, I really appreciate all of the hard work and effort that's going into the Census 2020. It is very important that every citizen is counted in our town for the funding. With that, I do need a motion to approve the proclamation to participate in the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee and encourage every person to be counted.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation to participate in the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee and encourage every person to be counted.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. And the motion carries. Item 7 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is to appoint Andrew Simons to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2021, to fill the vacancy left by Carl Bell, and to appoint Dwayne Perlow as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2019. Item B, approval of the August 6 and August 20, 2018 Town Council Meeting Minutes. And Item C, to receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes: July 31, 2018, which is the Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes; August 2, 2018, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Planning and Zoning Commission Specials Joint Work Session Minutes; June 21 and July 19, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like to remove any items? Okay, I would like to remove Item A just because I want to give, I'll explain that. So can I have a motion to remove Items B and C?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody who has served on the commissions, as well as the two new members that are being appointed, Andrew Simons as well as Dwayne Perlow. I really appreciate everybody who steps up, who serves in the community, and if you would like to say anything this evening, I wanted to give you an opportunity to do so at this time. Okay? All right. With that, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve Item A of the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Welcome to your new appointments. Item 8A is unfinished business. This is discussion and possible reaffirmation of Ordinance Number 270-099 and scheduling a joint work session with the Caliente Board of Directors on a date and location. So I had asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. To begin, it is reaffirming what was already in place in regards to the 270-99 ordinance. Also, moving forward, we've been working with the Caliente Board, and we would like to set up a work session on September 24 at 6:00 PM in Caliente with the Board and With that, are there any questions regarding this agendized item? Okay, with that, I need a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, no, the date is September 24 at 6:00 PM. I just want to make sure that works for everybody. It's a normal work session Monday.
Does this call for action?
Yeah, it's just reaffirming and saying that we're going to have a work session.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm Ordinance Number 0270-99, and also to set up a work session on September 24 at Caliente.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, our new business is Item Number 9, 9A, is discussion approval and disapproval of executing a purchase agreement with Greenstone Water Credits LLC for Penile Active Management Area Extinguishment Credits. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's with great pleasure that I stand before you this evening. Assisting me is Mr. Tim Bray with Greenstone. Some time ago, the council decided to diversify our water portfolio and really get serious about our future water in the town of Florence. We broke a 16-year-old agreement in terms of what we did with our CAP water and did something fairly revolutionary in the state of Arizona by working through Tonopah Irrigation District and CAGRD with respect to those credits to turn an item that was a red item in our budget every year into an item that is a black item in our budget. And I'm very happy to present to the council and those in the audience that that agreement, we received our first payment on that agreement just a couple of months ago. Joe's not here tonight to confirm that, but for $437,000 in the positive. Those funds were set aside as part of future action to acquire additional water. And the agreement that we have on the council agenda tonight is to work with a company named Greenstone that we've been working with and discussing this with for well over a year to purchase credits from them to add to our water portfolio. These are agricultural retirement credits, and I'm very proud to bring this before you. And Tim and I are ready to answer any questions. I'm going to see if Tim has anything to present in terms of Greenstone.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tim Bray. As Brent has pointed out, we've spent over a year working with your staff on a number of meetings to present a solution to you that's great for the town of Florence, good for Greenstone. It's one of those win-win situations. Going forward, we believe it's something that'll become a model that other communities in the state of Arizona may well want to take advantage of. Florence will be the first. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've worked in this arena for 28 years, working with the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, and this is one of the premier projects that we've put together as a team.
Councilmember Wall.
For the benefit of the audience, people at home, could you give us, in layman's terms, an explanation of how extinguishment credits work and the difference between paper water and water that comes out of our faucet?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to try and help. So where we have to start with our initial conversation is everyone understands how precious groundwater is in the state of Arizona. It's even more precious in these parts of Arizona because of not only our now 18-year drought condition that we're under, but due to the lack of surface water that exists in this part of the state anymore. Therefore, the state of Arizona, a couple decades ago, set up some active management areas for water in Arizona. There are a number of them. The most notable is Maricopa County to our north and what they call the Phoenix Active Management Area, and we're located in the Penile Active Management Area. So essentially, all water providers, and there are different types of water providers, I'll just look at the government side from this perspective. Town of Florence has an assured water supply under the state so that we can provide water to our residents. Private providers have to acquire that right through acquiring rights. So as the state, specifically the Arizona Department of Water Resources, looks at our water, and you said it, Councilwoman, they talk about wet water and they talk about paper water. So we have an allotment that we can pump out of the ground every year in the active management area. Our wet water production has to do with what's approved through ADWR and of course, ADEQ. So that is our wells and the amount that those wells can produce and are permitted to produce. All that information can be found on the Internet. The second side of that is the actual water production that we're allowed to have, not that we can have, but we're allowed to have. And we have an amount we can pump every year. It's a little less than 2,000 acre feet without penalty. So the town of Florence, under our assurity, depends on what I would deem an insurance policy. We belong to the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. So for entities that exist in these AMAs, if you need water for growth, et cetera, that's beyond your ability to produce, you can essentially buy into this insurance policy on an annualized basis. And there are a number of fees that go into that. I'm simplifying it, Tim, by calling it an insurance policy, but it essentially says, well, I got a better example. For anybody here who lives in Anthem and is served by Johnson Utilities, you have a itemized amount on every month's bill that says CAGRD. That CAGRD portion of your bill is water that Johnson Utilities pumped out of the ground and had to use the assurances provided by CAGRD to get access to that paper water. And so there is a surcharge per acre foot that they have to pay in addition to the membership of CAGRD and a number of those things. The town of Florence in the past has received some recharge credits through some of the projects that they've done. What's being provided in this is diversity of our water. We have our existing ag retirement credits. This would add to that in addition to our recharge credits we've received over time. The third piece that goes into that bucket is we're working very hard right now on our own recharge project so we can recharge our own permitted effluent within the town. The intent here is twofold. Number one, to be able to make sure that we have the water per acre foot that we need to grow in the future without the CAGRD. to grow in the future without the CAGRD fee on people's water bills. And secondarily, if we do a good enough job and we have enough diversity in our portfolio, we will get to a point where we have our own 100-year water supply on the paper side and we don't have to rely on CAGRD anymore. I know that was long-winded, but I tried to make it as simple as possible.
It's obviously a very complex issue and you did a fine job in helping us understand it a little better. Thank you.
One other question, Brent. Whenever we buy water credits, that is a permanent credit, so it doesn't go away.
Yes, sir. Well, yes, sir, as of today. As you know, for any of you in the audience that don't know, Councilman Anderson is our council member that is dedicated to water. He is a member of the Panal Water Augmentation Board and represents us in a number of ways statewide with respect to water. As it currently stands, those credits are good forever and are easily transferable between entities and we've already met with ADWR and have worked out all the kinks. However, there are plans in the future to change the laws to make it more difficult to transfer credits. It won't hurt us because once we have these credits, they'll be ours forever. I added an interesting clause to the agreement, if you've reviewed it, that essentially says if changes are made at the state level that are beyond our control, then the agreement is over. And Greenstone understands that and was willing to go along with that language.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to execute a purchase agreement with Greenstone Water Credits LLC for Panal Active Management Areas Extinguishment Credits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 1679-18, which is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Panal County, Arizona declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 28, 2018. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and members of the council, tonight, we will canvass the results of the primary election held August 28, 2018. And after council adopts the resolution that canvases, we will issue out our certificates of elections to three candidates who ran for office. As of primary election day, the town of Florence had 5,820 voters. The number of ballots cast at the primary election was 2,312. The number of people who were voted by a mail ballot election was 78% of the ballots. Those voting for the following council members were as follows. John Anderson received 1,046 votes. Michelle Cordes received 1,199 votes. Judy Hughes received 1,134 votes. Gary Pronzo received 888 votes. Valerie Brulrich received 851 votes. Three of those members did receive enough votes to be able to be elected in the primary election. That would be Michelle Cordes, Judy Hughes, and John Anderson. We also had Proposition 422 on the ballot. 60% of the voters voted in favor of Proposition 422. 39.66% voted against. That proposition does pass. That's the permanent base adjustment proposition. I would also like to go over the results as they are presented. Attached to the resolution, you do have a consolidated report. That is page one. The following page is a jurisdictional canvas. It does show the number of votes for each person and the proposition received at each precinct. The final document attached is the ballot issue report from mail ballot elections to show how many ballots we received. The town of Florence did accept 1,803 votes by mail. Of those three were rejected. And the town of Florence voter turnout was... 39.73%, and that would take into consideration the primary election. And when you look at the other percentages, you would take primary elections in the same years, which would mean every four-year cycle. So, you can see that the town of Florence did have the highest voter turnout in the primary elections for this particular voting cycle in the past 10 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? There are no questions, but I would like to thank you for everything that you do regarding the elections, communicating with citizens, putting together the information packet. You do a great job and I know we appreciate it as well as the residents and candidates. Mr. Billingsley.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just to add to the kind words that you provided for Lisa, I also wanted to mention, I thank you on behalf of the staff and I thank on behalf of the council for the hard work that Lisa and Joe put in to educating the public regarding the initiative. And they worked hard. They gave a lot of presentations. We received a lot of positive feedback regarding that hard work in those presentations and ultimately, we got the result that we hoped for. We couldn't have done it without them.
All right. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1679-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Panal County, Arizona declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 28, 2018.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
At this time, I would ask Ms. Michelle Cordes and Mr. John Anderson to come down and receive their certificate of elections. Judy Hughes was not able to be here this evening, but we will be issuing out her certificate this week.
Okay.
Hey, Ben? Ben? Get a picture?
And John Anderson. Item C is Resolution Number 1680-18, which is the discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Panal County, Arizona approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch. Unit 35A and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents, Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight for several reasons. First of all, you may or may not recall, my first meeting was in February 5th. That was the last time a final plat was processed in the town. So, this is the first one since then, which also means it's the first one that I've processed and brought forward to you. It's significant for several reasons. First of all, we have a new builder in town, as was announced last week. D.R. Horton will be developing this particular parcel along with several others. They have indicated to us that they are looking at an aggressive work schedule with this and several other final plats that will be coming forward over the next couple of months. And hopefully, we'll be getting into product vertical construction by spring, early summer of next year. Also significant is this triggers the requirement for the Pulte to extend Merrill Ranch Parkway west of Hunt Highway. So, I think both of those are something worthy of a little extra happiness regarding development out in that area. Very quickly, distance and orientation, if you follow the cursor, the parcel we're looking at sits at this location, basically immediately across Hunt Highway from Fire Station 2. A quick look at the plat itself and its context with others in the area. It will have a direct access to Hunt Highway in this location and then up through Anthem Unit 37, which also has been acquired by D.R. Horton, up to Merrill Ranch Parkway Extension, which will be the secondary emergency access in that location. Also, currently in process, since it happens to be on this particular diagram, is 35B, which is in this area. And then 33 and parcel, and Unit 31 have recently had their preliminary plats renewed by the planning commission, so those will also be coming forward in the near future. This one's a little off-kilter in that north is to the right, but this is the general layout for the 120 lots. And it also shows its basic configuration and how it accesses... Where's my cursor? I lost it. There it is. Accessing out to Hunt Highway in this location and then up Camden to through Lot, or through Unit 37 to Merrill Ranch Parkway. There's actually has been some preliminary site work done on this particular unit and that, of course, will be fine-tuned along with utilities as the infrastructure starts to go into construction. In summary, it's 120 lots, 29.65 plus or minus acres, which includes approximately one acre well site that already exists out there. But it gives us a density of 4.19 dwelling units per acre. We have a running total, of course, on Merrill Ranch and so, including 35A, gives us 3,710 single-family lots total at this time, developing 1,195.8 acres, which gives us an overall density of 3.125 aggregate at this point. The allowable density for Merrill Ranch is 3.5 total aggregate, so we're still well below that. And that pretty much covers it unless you have any questions. And we want to give a real formal welcome to D.R. Horton, although unfortunately, one of the representatives was not able to make it tonight.
All right. Well, I'm sad that they couldn't be here, but I do know that you both have been working very well together and communicating very well, so thank you. Councilmember Wall, question?
Since my understanding that the new residents of that unit will have access to the parkside amenities, how, are there any kinds of traffic controls that will be available for them to get across Hunt Highway?
The signalized intersection itself.
Okay.
Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway.
So, it'll go into that one?
And also, it's my understanding that they're going to have the underpass that will connect from the opposite side of Hunt Highway over to the Anthem at Merrill Ranch parkside side of the community.
So, that's the one by Fire Station 2?
I believe so, yes. Mr. Billingsley, do you have something to add?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, my understanding is they'll be able to use both pedestrian underpasses for the four parcels they've portioned, I'm sorry, for the four parcels they've purchased. Pickle peppers. They will have access to the pedestrian crossing that's on the far north end of their development. They'll also have access to the pedestrian crossing on the south end, which is where the fire station is. And I believe both of their accesses, in total, one of them is Merrill Ranch Parkway, which is signalized. The second one is, I believe, the intersection that's signalized where the fire station is. So, they're going to have signalized access both in the north and in the south, as well as access to the ped corridors. When we met with them a couple of weeks ago, if I remember right, Larry, we also talked to them about making sure they made, as part of their first phase, connection with one of those pedestrian underpasses with their infrastructure. So, they are willing and able to work with us on that.
Thank you.
That brings, sorry if I can ask a question. That brings up the question, maybe you touched on it and I missed it, but the trail system that they currently have that will go under, they are going to continue that through the entire neighborhood as well? Just to clarify.
Yes, Councilwoman, that's one of the things we talked to them about is we wanted to make sure that when they built their first phase, there was going to be a connection with that underpass. And they actually have trails in their development, as well as when we met with them the other day, I think they're going to potentially delete some of their residential parcels, I'm looking at Jared, to add some, a tot lot and some pocket parks.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, they were actually indicated to us that they've taken the Pulte standard for amenities within their development and they want to increase it significantly by the sounds of it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Goleen?
Yes, is this in CFD number two?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, it's in CFD number two.
All right, thank you, Ms.
One other question. We talked about this, I think, in a previous meeting about the turn lane for the fire station. Will that be done at this time?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, the plans are now done with respect to that. That turn lane is not a responsibility of the developer, it's a responsibility of the town. That's an item that we're working on at this time to get that funding to build that turn lane. Yes, but the design is complete, if I recall. Correct, Mr. Solis?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I need a motion for Resolution Number 1680-18.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1680-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Panal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 35A and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Harmer. Agenda item D is Resolution Number 1681-18. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Panal County, Arizona, which is adopting the revised Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2018/2019 Employee Classification Plan. Mr. Scott Barber.
Mayor Walter, members of the council, we're before you this evening asking for your approval of resolution which would amend our employee classification plan. As you already know, all of our employees are assigned position classifications. All of those classifications are then assigned a pay range and they're included in our class plan. And because our council approves our classification plan every year, any adjustments or changes that need to be made during the year, we have to come back to you and to the extent that our plans don't include classifications that are already included in our class plan. And such is the case that brings us here this evening. You already know and I've explained in the request for council action that with the departure in the last couple of years of our Public Works Director and our Community Development Director, Town Manager Billingsley took the opportunity to consolidate those departments to a little reorganization and created the Development Services Department. And we've been operating with that structure now for a little bit of time. Brent desires now to make some changes, essentially reflecting the workload in Development Services specifically for the director. And that's noted with issues in the Utilities Division that require close attention. And so, the desired plan is to go back to having a Department of Public Works and having a Community Development Department. And so, we made changes to position titles.
Council, are there any questions?
Yes. The increase in, in the general fund are approximately $27,000. Explain that.
The impact is that, plus we are also, because of the, the changes in, in structure, right now, we have support staff, or that is, an administrative assistant that's charged 50% to the general fund and 50% to enterprise fund. And so we're going to be, we're going to be absorbing those costs into the, the general fund cost as well.
Okay.
It ends up being about, as I recall, Councilmember Anderson, about $35,000. I did not include that here, but specifically, that's included. That, that's part of the deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that this is a positive addition, and it shows that we appreciate and value the people in their positions that have, you know, their, their strengths and where they are. We are a growing community. We are opening new plats, and we have new businesses that are looking at us. So this will also allow those businesses and residents to receive the best services possible from our town without overburdening our staff. So I appreciate everybody's collaboration on this effort. And if there's nothing further, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 1681-18, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the revised Town of Florence FY 2018 to 2019 employee classification plan.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I had a statement that I wanted to provide tonight. There's, we've been receiving a number of comments with respect to social media, as well as there was a letter to the editor that was recently received. And I, I thought, to clarify how the town operates to those folks watching and, and to those in the audience, I'd kind of describe how we operate from a public information standpoint. In the course of day-to-day operations, it often becomes necessary for us to share news, information, or official positions of the town, or our town council, with our partners in the media. The public information officer, which in this case is Mr. Bitter, is tasked with many of these duties, and as such, he maintains immediate contact list, which the town uses from time to time to share its positions and to share information. Such was the case recently, when Mr. Bitter, our public information officer, was directed to produce and dispense an official news release from the town of Florence. That news release was specifically to clarify the town's position as it relates to the Florence Copper Project. Mr. Bitter worked alongside of our attorneys to put together the release, and that release was appropriately authorized to send and release to our media contacts. Despite unsubstantiated claims, that I spoke to earlier, in terms of a letter to the editor and comments on social media, the facts of the release were not the opinion of Mr. Bitter. They were a formal stated position of the town. This is the practice of the town, and will continue to be the practice of the town into the future, as Florence has a need to clarify and provide our positions, as well as clarify any misstatements, or to provide additional information. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. This is our second call to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say today, a lot of the actions that we took, I think, were going to be best served, both for our staff, as well as for the community. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to some of the changes, both in staffing, but also even the plats, everything that we're doing here. I think we're all moving progressive, and we're moving in the right direction, and we're trying to work together to better Florence. So I'm just happy that everything that's sort of going on here, but I really don't have anything else tonight.
Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything additional.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I attended the CAP 50th Anniversary Celebration this last week, and it was quite impressive. Their, their facility up in North Phoenix, you go into a room, it's about, oh, maybe half the size of this room, it's got their control center. It looks like the NASA Control Center. And it's operated by three operators. Those three operators control over 20,000 devices. You know, I didn't realize, you know, that along the canal, you know, almost every mile, there's gate. And those gates have multiple controllers, things that raise and close the gate, things that sense the flow of the water. A lot of this is done by the, you know, by the computers itself to keep everything in balance. So when somebody orders water, the water doesn't get there immediately. The water takes like three days to get from the Cotterada River to Tucson. So it all has to be planned out. Each of these gates are like individual ponds, individual pools, so they have to manage each one of these, and there's, you know, it's 300 miles of canal, so it's, it's quite impressive to go see that. And they have open houses every so often, and if, if anyone has the opportunity, I would certainly suggest that you go see that, because it's, it's quite impressive. It was impressive to hear, I moved here in '69, that's when they started building it. Actually, the bill was passed in '68. But they started building in '69, but they had a lot of the history of the different politicians involved, from Barry Goldwater to, to John Rhodes. Of course, Carl Hayden was the, you know, sort of the father of the CAP, and they went through all the history. It was, it was quite an impressive event, and I appreciate being invited to it and being able to represent Town of Florence. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goleen?
I'm just excited that it's going to start cooling down. This is my, fall is my favorite time of the year, but I, I received your pamphlet, Brian, in the mail today, and I would just encourage all the citizens of Florence to make sure that you try to support the local events. There's several of them planned, and also at the Windmill Winery, they have events planned there, too. It just makes the community so much more cohesive whenever everyone participates in the events that the town and others outside of the town sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes, I'd just like to welcome Drew and Dwayne aboard on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're getting close to filling most of our, our commissions, which has been pretty tough to do the last few years, but it's great to see people stepping up to the base and participating, and that helps also with our cohesiveness of, of the town and helping the town move forward, and everybody understanding what's going on. I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Gosh, I think they took all my thunder. Bill, Becky, Kristen. If I don't have anything to add that would be of any benefit.
Well, I want to thank everybody who came out and participated in tonight's meeting. And I also just want to take an opportunity, because there is an item that's going to be on your upcoming general election ballot. It's Prop Number 127. Done a lot of research, and I've been communicating, and I just want to make sure that everybody takes a look at what this ballot will do, so I just want to take a moment just to share some facts. Prop 127 is a ballot measure that aims to amend the Arizona state constitution with a mandate that public utilities must derive at least 50% of their power from renewable resources, not including nuclear, by 2030. It was started in Arizona by Tom Steyer, the California billionaire. Schools are going to be hit really hard as the O&M, which would decrease due to higher rates and lower property tax collections from having to close some plants. So some reasons to look out for this is, this is going to cause higher electricity rates for customers. This is going to make Arizona less competitive economically. This is also going to threaten the closure of Palo Verde Generating Station, which is the largest carbon-free energy producer in the USA, and the state's largest taxpayer. This information is derived from APS, actually, and they have some fact sheets that are out and about, if anybody cares to look at this. That said, this coming week, I have the amazing opportu, do you have a question, Mr. Hawkins?
Well, I don't think the town, the town's not taking a position on that. You're, this is, this is.
This is not a position, this is just sharing, like, facts of what it would do. This is not.
Oh, you're saying they're facts of, you know, I, I don't know, this, I don't, I don't think we should be discussing this myself. I don't know.
That's okay. I did clear it with Lisa and with our attorney prior to the meeting, just to say, you know, we received this in the mail from APS. It's an information sheet regarding Prop 127, and just trying to communicate, because I do know our residents.
But the facts in that letter are against Proposition 127. So what you're, you're, you're reading stuff stating that it's their position or facts, and we don't know that for sure. I mean, people need to do their own research, but I don't think that's something relevant that we, I mean, for us to be pushing forward.
We can agree to disagree. I'm just sharing so residents can become educated on the issue, especially if it's something that's going to impact, you know, your electricity bill. I would want to be aware, and I'm just trying to raise awareness.
Yeah, but you're just giving APS a side. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's, I don't think we should even be involved in it myself.
Councilmember Hawkins, thank you so much for your, your kind input. All right. That being said, this week, I am leaving on Wednesday. I have an amazing opportunity to attend the White House for some meetings, so I'm looking forward to coming back with some information to share, and what happened with that. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.[1679.51]